Welcome to the meeting of Board of Trustees here at LEED Dual Language Academy.
Buenas tardes a todos y bienvenidos a la reunión de la Mesa Directiva de LEED Dual Language Academy.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to our board chair, Alejandro.
Alright. Okay. Good evening, everyone. The time is six oh two. Give me one moment. Great, sorry about that. Hi, yes, the time is six oh two. Can I get, please get a motion to start the meeting, right? I think we need a motion to start. Yeah, that's fine. Great, cool, then great. Can I have a motion to approve the January board minutes?
Yes.
Great.
Agenda first.
Oh, that's right, sorry about that. Yes, sorry, can I, sorry about that, folks. Let's please get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight. Maho seconded, great. I'm sorry, my second, Emily, thank you. Wonderful, okay, great. Now, let's go ahead and get a motion to approve our January board minutes.
Motion to approve.
Right, Emily, second.
I have a second.
Great, awesome. Oh, oh, gotcha, okay, great, really awesome. Great. All in favor, wonderful, great, thank you. Alright, let's go to turn it over to Joe for new business.
Alright. Once again, I see that some new folks just joined us. Thank you for joining our board meeting for February here at LEED Dual Language Academy. So, we're going to dive right into our principal updates.
Muchas gracias. Vemos nuevas personas en esta reunión de la Mesa Directiva. Le damos la más cordial bienvenida y vamos a comenzar con las actualizaciones de la principal.
Alright, we're gonna start with academic updates. Please just feel free to just stop me if you have any questions. I wanna start with test prep. In our last board meeting, we shared. We shared that test prep. We launched it after holiday break and we continue to build that stamina to get our kids ready for the state exams. Here, we have some pictures of what's happening at Red Campus. So, we continue to provide individual targeted instruction to every third and fourth grade student. Students are definitely demonstrating our core virtues. They are full of alegría, excitement, and showing valentia when targeting those texts and math problems. We have daily meetings with our teachers and we are diving into the data and planning, weekly planning, daily practicing the lessons for the following day. There's a picture here that I want everyone to hone into because this was definitely a success. Last week, we pulled our dean of instruction for second, for first and second grade and we did a fishbowl. So, you see that the third and fourth grade teachers are watching her. This year, definitely, we do have some teachers that have been teaching for a couple of years, but some of them, the testing grades is new for them. So, they were super excited jotting down the teacher actions that they observed Riba Feliciano implementing. And then, right after that, they implemented the same lesson. Ever since we've done this, we are definitely beating our timers and kids have significantly increased their urgency and meeting their goals in finishing texts by a certain amount of time. So, that was really, really cool to see, so I wanted to share that. We have upcoming assessments coming up, interim assessments for third and fourth grade this week, math and ELA. And I look forward to, I'm gonna stop right there so that we can get Yarisa to translate.
Algunas de las actualizaciones académicas que queremos compartir es el inicio de la preparación para los exámenes estatales de Nueva York. Como podemos ver en las imágenes, vemos diferentes situaciones que están pasando, como es la instrucción individual, como también lo es que los estudiantes están demostrando las virtudes. Y también hay reuniones diarias. Los equipos de tercero y cuarto grado se están reuniendo diariamente para continuar analizando la data, continuar planificando y continuando utilizando la práctica que los va a apoyar a ellos en su desarrollo profesional instruccional. Queremos hacer hincapié a una imagen que tenemos. Es una imagen donde nuestra decana académica, Miss Feliciano, Riba Feliciano, hizo una demostración o mejor conocido fishbowl como un modelaje. Esto es un modelaje donde todos los profesores están observando a la persona que está haciendo la lección. Es una práctica donde todos observan y luego implementan la misma lección. Queremos recalcar que luego de esta práctica, todos nuestros profesores pudimos ver un gran avance y una gran implementación de todo lo que ellos observaron, ya sea las prácticas que nuestra decana académica, Riba Feliciano, implementó y demostró en ese día. También tenemos nuestras próximas evaluaciones. Comenzamos con las evaluaciones interinas que serían el dos quince y el dos dieciséis, que son las evaluaciones que vamos a estar teniendo en los grados de tercero y cuarto grado.
Yeah, so, in addition to the ELA and math assessments that we're implementing this week in Red Campus for third and fourth grade, our second round of STEP begins when we come back from break. During our full day professional development on March thirteen, we'll be diving into this data in third and fourth grade of the interim assessments and cater to the data from step round two.
Los grados de kinder a segundo estarán comenzando la evaluación, la evaluación de STEP, conocida como la evaluación de lectura, es el ciclo número dos. Entonces, luego, en marzo trece, las profesoras y el equipo de liderazgo van a estar evaluando y analizando la data que vamos a recibir luego de tener esta evaluación.
Next thing I wanted to share tonight was the process that we are currently in in creating a dual language committee. We are super excited about this. We will be getting training from Lilian Ardell. Lilian Ardell worked with dual, with our school, year one. So, our founding year, she supported LEED with starting up the dual language program. So, she is coming back and I will be personally receiving coaching from Lilian. And we are creating a committee where she will be coaching this committee and then we're turning to the rest of the staff.
Estamos muy emocionados también de informar que en la colaboración hacia nuestro programa de lenguaje dual vamos a estar teniendo y colaborando con Lilian Ardell. Lilian Ardell es una persona que trabajó con nosotros el primer año y que va a estar apoyando a la principal Andujar, también a algunas profesoras que van a crear un comité y Lilian va a estar proveyendo apoyo adicional uno a uno a las profesoras y a nuestra principal Andujar.
Another area that's been a big focus in the last month is special education training. Our teachers have requested more training specifically in STEAD. So, this last month, we've had two trainings where teachers received specific special education training on how IEPs relate to instruction and really unpacking the IEPs and understanding what our kids are, the kids that do have IEPs, on what their classifications are and what specific strategies we, teachers can use to ensure that every student has access, right? We wanna make sure that even our kids that have learning disabilities or other, you know, classifications based on their evaluations and stated in their IEP, making sure that we are providing access in all areas for these students.
Otras áreas también académicas, actualizaciones ha sido el entrenamiento de educación especial. Este pasado mes hemos tenido invitados que nos han proveído entrenamiento de educación especial a las profesoras y profesores de LEED Dual Language Academy. En estos entrenamientos, los profesores pudieron comprender el proceso de IEP y lo que conlleva el IEP en su totalidad. También, los profesores han estado aprendiendo estrategias que pueden ayudar a todos los estudiantes para que todos los estudiantes que tienen un IEP tengan acceso a nuestra educación. Es muy importante recalcar que nos hemos enfocados en que cada estudiante, no importando su discapacidad, ya sea una, una. Learning disability, ya sea. A cualquier, cualquier discapacidad que tengan, tanto en el habla como en el lenguaje, como en lo académico, todos los estudiantes tengan ese acceso a la educación para ellos poder ser accesibles a todo tipo de educación.
Okay, before we move on to culture, any questions about academic, academic updates? Okay, so, culture, a lot of stuff has been happening in culture, like in the culture area as well. Black History Month, there is so many great things happening here. You see some pictures, there goes Nathaniel, students learning about West African dances and culture through drums. Students have shared their favorite superheroes and engaged in learning about real life heroes in history. Here, we can see that we have our secret readers coming in this week to read books about embracing our differences and celebrating black culture through literacy.
Este mes estamos celebrando la cultura afroamericana y queremos recalcar algunas imágenes. Como podemos ver, vemos a Nathaniel, el estudiante de kinder, que estaba practicando y aprendiendo con los tambores sobre la cultura afroamericana y bailes. También podemos ver como en la segunda imagen, los estudiantes compartieron su superhéroe, pero también aprendieron de los superhéroes reales y personas reales de nuestra historia que han inculcado y han promovido el aprendizaje y la celebración de la cultura afroamericana. En la siguiente imagen podemos ver que comenzamos esta semana con un lector secreto. Las familias están llegando a LEED para leer a las, en las aulas de clases. Y estos son algunas imágenes también, que vemos libros y algunas promociones sobre la historia afroamérica.
Tomorrow, we will be celebrating, it's not only Valentine's Day, but here we are celebrating our core virtue, cariño. So, that's something we'll be celebrating tomorrow. February seventeen is the hundredth day of school. We're definitely gonna be celebrating the hundredth day of this school year.
Estamos celebrando mañana, vamos a celebrar el Día de San Valentín y nos estamos enfocando este mes en la virtud del cariño. Además de eso, vamos a estar celebrando los cien días de escuela que celebramos acá en LEED Dual Language Academy.
To close out our Black History Month, we will have a jazz concert on February seventeen. So, I'm sure if you are a parent listening in, your kiddos will be going home talking about the jazz concert. We have secret readers, that is not only this, it's all of this week up until Friday.
Para cerrar el mes de la historia afroamericana, vamos a tener un concierto de jazz. So, probablemente va a escuchar a su hijo o hija llegar a casa diciendo que escuchó música de jazz en el concierto. Esto lo vamos a hacer el día dos de, de febrero diecisiete. Y también, como comenzamos esta semana, el lector secreto que va a ser toda esta semana.
Another thing I wanted to bring up is, and I know that parents, we have had meetings with several parents. We have reset RTB one and RTB two to make sure that we are actually data driven. We have unpacked data on where our kids are that started getting the, that were in the CHICO program. So, we have started to identify school-wide initiatives based on the trends of behaviors that we noticed. So, we are really excited to come back from February break, really implementing school-wide initiatives that support social emotional growth of the whole school, right? What trends we're noticing per grade level, but also school-wide. CHICO has been a success. Definitely, I needed to do some reset there. So, some parents are, receive notices, right? That some students graduated from the CHICO program because they met their goals. And we have some students that have joined the program. So, that we've definitely have done some work around our RTB tier system of support to make sure that we are relying and grounding our work on data.
Hemos hecho un reseteo completo al programa de respuesta a la conducta. Hemos iniciado nuestras iniciativas escolares. Una de ellas es CHICO, el programa de CHICO, que ha sido un éxito total. Como bien han sabido, algunos estudiantes ya se han graduado de CHICO y otros están en el proceso y esto ha demostrado un gran éxito en nuestra escuela. Además, todas las iniciativas escolares que están apoyando a los estudiantes en el área socioemocional de, en sus áreas académicas y aún así ayudando a todos nuestros estudiantes basándonos en la data que recolectamos. So, es muy importante que este reseteo ha sido hecho basándonos en data, en data que hemos colectado a través de nuestras iniciativas escolares y a través de la data que nos ofrece el programa de CHICO.
Well, here are some pictures of our friends.
Aquí hay algunas imágenes de nuestros estudiantes.
Alright, so, we're moving on now to family engagement. We've had three workshops since our last board meeting. In third and fourth grade, we had our test prep workshop where we gave parents resources and we unpacked our test prep initiative and gave them strategies on how to support their students at home. We also had a K two homework and reading strategies workshop for our K two families here at Blue Campus and that was definitely a success as well and parents walked away with great resources. And then, this just past Saturday, we had a social emotional learning workshop where I was just sharing one of our board members, how parents were standing up and videotaping role plays where Yarisa and I were acting out, you know, strategies to implement at home when your students don't wanna do their homework or other challenges that are typical when kids go home after school. So, that was a great success as well.
Nos vamos a mover al área de, de familias. Queremos compartir que hemos tenido tres diferentes talleres familiares en persona. El primero fue en tercer y cuarto grado, que fue la preparación de los exámenes estatales de New York. En este taller ofrecimos a las familias diversas estrategias para trabajar con los estudiantes para poder apoyarlos en el proceso de prepararse para los exámenes estatales de Nueva York. También tuvimos un taller familiar en donde las familias de, desde kinder a segundo grado participaron y aprendieron nuevas estrategias sobre cómo apoyar a los estudiantes en la lectura en casa. Y por último, también tuvimos muy reciente, como el sábado pasado, un taller a la familia sobre el aprendizaje socioemocional, sobre las emociones importantes. En este taller, las familias pudieron ver y observar diferentes estrategias que ellos pueden utilizar en la casa. Inclusive, varias familias estaban tomando vídeo y fotos de un modelaje que hicimos la principal Andujar y esta servidora, en el cual le mostrábamos a los papás cómo apoyar a los estudiantes en caso de que el estudiante se refiere, se rehúse a hacer la tarea en el lugar. Y como bien mencionó este nuestra principal Andujar, todos los talleres fueron un gran. Exit.
Oh, I could give sometimes I forget that I put the picture. So, here are some pictures of the family workshop from this past Saturday. And if you are a parent and you didn't attend, there has been great feedback and parents have requested to redo this workshop. So, stay tuned for the date where we will provide this workshop again.
Aquí hay algunas imágenes de las fotos que, del pasado taller de familia. Si usted es un papá de familia, hemos tenido una buena retroalimentación de las familias y varias familias están pidiendo volver a repetir el taller familiar. Así que, por favor, esté pendiente porque esto puede suceder.
And enrollment. I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Faria that's gonna give us an update on enrollment.
Okay, so, in terms of enrollment, I wanted to talk about. The timeline that we're currently on, we're still on track of the timeline. And I wanted to talk about some great things that have been happening in the next five. So, we've worked on increasing our enrollment through increasing our faculty. So, we have created some new amazing application information for families. You'll see that we have referral competition going out now for families. We created half flyers that you can send out, give out, as we do our community outreach. We also have created a ad which we were using for some of our partners that we're connected with of the New York Post, as well as with the family magazines, so that we can get to more promotion out there for the school. And then, in the middle, you'll see that we traded these lovely big poster-sized stands that we put outside of both of our school locations where families pass by, we see a lot of families looking at it and they can actually screen the barcode right there from the big poster and apply to our school.
Vamos a pasar a las actualizaciones de inscripción. Como, como bien mencionó Ms. Faria, nuestra atención ha estado centralizada en. En, en promover nuestras estrategias de mercadeo. Como ustedes pueden ver en las fotos, hemos entregado pancartas a las familias. En la segunda foto, ustedes pueden ver un anuncio que tenemos en las entradas de ambos campus, el rojo y el azul, en el cual las familias pueden pasar y escanear el código e inmediatamente los va a llevar a una página web. También hemos promovido y nuestro enfoque se ha llevado en actividades de continuar divulgando estas promociones a la comunidad. Y también algo muy importante que mencionó la señora Faria es que también estamos llevando esto un poco más allá lejos en nuestras redes sociales y con la publicidad que también en el New York Post que va a estar comenzando y pasando.
I also want to say that school tours are happening on Tuesdays. We've had a lot of families call in and schedule visits to our school and then we're able to help them submit applications. Our street tableings started today and will continue on Mondays, Fridays and weekends through April. So, we're going to be starting once we come back again from the break on the weekends. We're also contacting local businesses, schools and churches for presentation.
Y los, las visitas de las familias han comenzado, ya sean los tours, que las familias vienen y visitan la escuela. Adicional a eso, continuamos con nuestra publicidad y continuamos haciendo referencia a las familias para que puedan recomendar otras familias también.
We also are continuing with our new marketing. So, we're using our, all of our social media, our website has been updated, our Instagram, our Facebook. And we wanted to also plug at this moment that on the entire board is invited to join our Instagram page. It is one of the smaller considerations that they look for when it comes to our charter renewal, that the board is also actively engaged in our social media campaign. So, our Instagram page is @LEEDBrooklyn. So, please make sure that you join that so as we are starting to post information. And if you are not on the board, you are also invited to join our social media as we are actively posting on there.
Hemos actualizado como objetivo de aumentar nuestra estrategia de mercadeo nuestras redes sociales, ya sea Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, también hemos actualizado nuestro sitio web y le hacemos una invitación a los miembros de la Mesa Directiva para unirse a nuestro Instagram que es @LEEDBrooklyn. También, si usted aunque no sea parte de los miembros de la Mesa Directiva, pero también nos puede contactar e incluirnos en Instagram, Facebook, Twitter y también puede visitar nuestro sitio actualizado, que nuestra página web que ya está actualizada.
Okay, so, down to the numbers, I wanted to talk about our current enrollment. We've seen some shifts in enrollment and discharges in the last month, but we're still at around three eighty-seven, which was three eighty-six last, last month. However, we actually saw some change in that. So, we enrolled while we discharged to kind of even out that number. We're trying to still move forward. However, our applications for this school year has, have officially closed. For the current school year, we'll see that we have shifted dramatically from, dramatically from last week, last month. In kindergarten, we now have a hundred and ten applications. We had sixty-three last month, so we're moving forward. And in both first and second grade, we now have four applications. We had one last month. New applications are being submitted every day. So, we're really excited about the new outreach that we've officially launched to see if we can also push some more of those numbers, especially in first and second grade.
Vamos a hablar sobre nuestras cifras de inscripción. Han habido algunos cambios, pero nuestro ciclo escolar de inscripciones total es trescientos ochenta y siete al momento y ahora mismo tenemos trescientos ochenta y seis. Lo que significa que han habido algunos cambios en transal, pero la cifra se queda regularmente en un número muy parecido. En kindergarten, el mes pasado teníamos sesenta y tres inscripciones y al momento tenemos ciento diez inscripciones, lo que significa que ha habido un aumento y que nos estamos moviendo de manera rápida en cuestión a las cifras de inscripción. Primer grado cuatro, como pueden ver, segundo cuatro y cada día se presentan nuevas solicitudes. Entonces, como bien mencionó Ms. Faria, hemos visto alguna alta y baja, pero los números han sido similares.
Okay. Can I just ask a question before we move on? Can you, what, thank you first of all for all the amazing work that you've been doing. Enrollment in this context is extremely difficult and all the flowers to you for your efforts. I just wanna see, how is the, how are the application number, application numbers tracking against like historical numbers? Like, how do we do this time last year?
I would have to double check that. I know that when I looked at the applications last year, it was significantly less in terms of the timeline.
Great.
I think now that we're moving forward, I should see even like a bigger spread in terms of the difference from last year to this year. Since we're using Schoolman actively and we're also created this week, we're creating a paper application. So, that, and, and tweet it from, we had one in the past that wasn't very regularly used. So, now that we're going out into the community and actively meeting families, I anticipate that even the paper applications will also exist and more applications that we're seeing kind of a gap in terms of the technology usage for them. So, that, that I think should also help us.
I also have a question about discharges. I'm not sure if there's more, what for you or for this going on, starting like, what have been the implications, reasons there?
The majority ones that we saw, we actually saw three, actually four, sorry. Discharges due to moving, so they're moving out of, like, one was on Long Island and it's just on the commute. We also, and that was two students, although we also had a lady that was in Staten Island that was just too far. Since they weren't eligible for the bus. So, we had some of those. We've also had two students that weren't really in terms of their fit, what their services is. So, for example, they needed a ten to one. One of them currently is still in the process. So, while all of that was happening, we were still actively rolling and so our number is pretty much up even. But those were the attrition that we saw.
Great, thank you.
Perfect, alright, now we can go ahead and move on to new business. Alright. All right, great.
All right, so we don't have any.
I think that's fine, we can get, with no new business, we can then move on to committee.
All right, perfect. So we're gonna move on to our committee reports. I'll turn it over to my next.
Thank you, Joanna. So, you know, the biggest issue with our finances throughout the year is related to the last topic we just discussed, which was enrollment. We tackled the biggest of those issues earlier this year whenever we realized that we were at about 90% of what our target enrollment was at the time of budget. So, you know, that big hit has already been, you know, kind of taken to where we are looking at about $370,000 less in overall revenue than what we had budgeted for the year. However, Joanna has done a great job as kind of managing expenses and managing the staffing model of the school to where we've been able to save a ton of money on the backend, to where we're ultimately actually forecasting a net income that's $200,000 better than what we budgeted despite the drop in enrollment. So, you know, all systems are go there. We are starting the progress for the FY '24 budget as we speak. Joanna and I met earlier today to kind of get the ball rolling there. As it relates to enrollment, we are gonna have a much higher contingency than we have in the past to kind of account for these student issues going forward. Hopefully, we meet our targets and, you know, we don't have to kind of worry about that. But that way we can kind of get ahead of any potential enrollment shortfalls again compared to what our chartered target enrollment is. So, nothing, you know, nothing real new to report on the financials other than what we've been showing the past couple of months. We did in the month of December with $1.8 million in cash after receiving our per pupil for January and February. And we have a pretty significant accounts receivable balance that we have just recently been able to start drawing down on for our title grants.
Executive?
Great, the executive committee met this month and started to engage in sort of next steps work as it relates to the charter renewal work. Both engaging the board but also preparing on how to best collaborate with Joe and her efforts as we move towards renewal. Additionally, we did some very basic level mapping out of board development, none of which at this point has merited anything of substance in the immediate.
Academic accountability?
We had a meeting. And actually, most of the things were things that were covered in the physical updates for exciting news about the mock exam. We didn't discuss that in the updates. It's coming up March 10th, March 2nd, and it's going to include full testing conditions and proper accommodations, which, you know, should help us further prepare for the exam. You know, some third where you were very excited about all of that. There was also staff had bigger questions about training and there was this head consulting team and worked with them. And I think the rest were things that were covered and we had the workshop and the the, I saw 30th of February, we're planning on doing this, going out of kids, of kids who are working above their radio. And doing shelter classroom and, you know, making sure that everybody is working as they should. And I think those were the updates that were not covered under physical updates. All right.
As far as board norms and development, again, as I alluded to in my previous comment in executive committee, we started just thinking down the road of what it means for the board and renewal in this coming year. Namely that just making sure that we have a full deck of folks ready to go deep into the renewal process, exploring obviously the pathways for any potential board members and opening it up to the group. And then, and finally, just the last comment I do want to make with respect to board norms is again a need for the board to move towards a board retreat, which for those folks on the call is a very helpful and useful step in the renewal process to ensure the board and the school continue to be aligned during a very high-stakes period.
All right. Time for public comments. Good evening, Ms. Woods. Thank you for joining us this evening. Do you have any questions, comments?
Good evening. No questions or comments. Thank you.
Si alguien tiene alguna pregunta, algún comentario?
Comentaria. Señora Hernandez.
Señora Hernandez, Ms. Woods, señora Fernández.
All right. Okay, so we're gonna move forward to the executive.
Yeah, this I think includes public comments. I'll be making a motion, well, sorry, I'll be asking for a motion to move to executive session as it relates to a matter of personnel. Folks, for those of you on the call, we will be coming back only to adjourn. So do without what you will. If you'd like to sign off, you're more than happy to do, sorry, more than welcome to do so. Now, 6:38, can I please get a motion to move to executive session? My second. Great, Magdalena, all in favor? Great, the eyes have it.
Eh, en estos momentos, ya que no tenemos comentarios o preguntas, eh, nos vamos a mover al cierre de la sesión. Se ha creado una moción para movernos para finalizar la sesión.
Ahí, para esta sesión.
Para ir a la sesión ejecutiva.
Y después regresamos para cerrar.
Y luego regresamos para cerrar.
Okay.
No, I think, I think it's okay.
Yeah, right here. I'm on it now.
We'll just, we don't have to go through.
Yep, yeah, that's fine. All right, everyone, we return from executive session at seven twenty five. We are now going to make a motion to adjourn the February meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Melody, second, David. Great. We're, we're journeying at seven twenty six P M. Thank you and have a great. Oh, sorry. Oh, my God. All in favor. Well, okay, the eyes have it. Okay. Have a great evening. Thank you so much.